Let's go. You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting in the planning and zoning commission to order. Today is May the 7th, 2020. It is 6 o'clock. First item, can we have a roll call?
Absolutely. Chairman Enasmo Villarreal?
Present.
Commissioner Jose Tevez. Commissioner Jorge Dominguez. Commissioner Rafael Duñez. Commissioner Abraham Lugo.
Present.
Commissioner Johnny Arvise.
Present.
Commissioner Oluwagale.
Present.
Commissioner George Beckelheimer.
Present.
And Commissioner Carlos Flores. Mr. Chairman, you have fun. You have your.
Um, I do want to make, did any commissioner contact you guys to be excused?
Not I.
All right, I had one, one, yes, go ahead, Kirby.
Commissioner Flores let us know he was, he was going to be out.
Okay, and I had Commissioner Jorge Dominguez called me and said he wasn't going to be available.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, uh, what's, what's the phrase? Go to excuse Flores and Dominguez commissioners.
Right.
Second.
A second.
Good afternoon, this is Joey Tevez.
Okay. Joey's on. Okay, motion, everybody in favor of that motion?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries in. Next item that we have is the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, I guess we can have the Pledge of Allegiance. Kirby, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
The flag. The United States.
The United States of America. And to the Republic. For which ends. One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indesible. With liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you.
Kirby, Kirby, do you need that writing next time?
We've got a little bit of an echo when everybody gets on, is the only challenge.
Listen, Kirby, can you have Rafael call? I know Commissioner Duñez is calling me that he cannot, or he doesn't know how to, how to get on the meeting. Can you have Ralph call him real quick? And, you know, he says he doesn't have a link to get on, but.
Oh, just resend the link, Kirby, because sometimes the link disappears. And well, it doesn't disappear, but you got to get to it. Just resend the link.
I'll, I'll communicate to Commissioner Duñez immediately.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Next item that we have is the consideration of the approval of the minutes of, uh, the meeting of April the 16th. Do y'all read them?
Yeah, the commissioners read, I read them, so I'm good. I could, I could motion to approve once.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries, thank you. All right, any citizens' comments at this point?
Commissioner, I'm going to ask that we pause here for just a minute because there's about a 30-second delay. And, and while we're paused here, let me say that I'm afraid now that the meeting's already started, we're probably not going to be able to accommodate or stop the meeting to be able to, uh, to try to get the other commissioner on. But after this, we will try our best to prepare him for the next one so that, um, he's able and familiar with, with joining on.
That's fine.
If you want to call the meeting, we could wait for 10, 15 minutes while we try and, and get him on.
Now, let's roll it. Let's roll.
No, I'm not going to wait. I mean, this, this item should have been taken care of early on.
Well, and this is why we started the meeting at 5:30, so.
I agree. No, um, we're, we've, you've got the rest of them and everybody, we're ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Rafa's going to be needed in just a second.
I understand that, and that's why, you know, we'll give him a little bit of time to get back on here.
Okay.
All right.
Rafa, you go?
Commissioner Duñez is, it should already be online. Commissioner Duñez, can you please confirm that?
Yes, aquí estoy. Here I am.
Okay, very good, very good.
Great. Now, as we move, as we move forward, just a reminder, if you're not speaking, if you could please mute, that would really help us cut down on the extra noise.
Yes, sir.
Rafa, if you want to continue?
Very well. Our first item is item 6A, consideration of the preliminary plat of Winfield subdivision Phase 9. Excuse I plead. The applicant Edward Beckelheimer KRK Limited, engineer Bellwark Consulting, 30.38 acre tract located south of Shiloh Drive and west of Kirby Drive. The zoning for this development is R1. The proposed use is residential. The proposed number of lots is 114. This is location map. Aerial photo. Street view. Copy of the proposed plat. Staff comments from planning.
Uh, and just as a reminder, Rafa, we don't need to read through everything, but if you want to highlight anything that might be unusual or that might be worth, worth noting with any of these, otherwise you can just, uh, announce.
For planning, engineering. Water utilities. Traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Okay. I have a question for Rafael.
Yes, sir.
I noticed that one of the comments in planning is obviously, and I saw that in the plat, this is R1, yet the lots are under 6,000 square feet. Um, and I guess I'll ask the engineer of record if, what is his, you know, we can approve this subject to, I guess, a zone change because they're not going to meet, you know, the building code right now with an R1.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. We did speak with the engineer, and I believe he should be coming on the line shortly. There were a couple of lots that were identified as under 6,000 square feet, and he's already reconfigured those, but he can address that in a moment, momentarily. Um, Mr. Chairman, Danny McGee, for the record, I have Oscar Castillo on the phone.
Very good. Hello, Oscar.
It's Commissioner Stapp. We concur with the comment, and we're, there were a couple of laws, actually three laws, that when we moved a few lines, they were under the 6,000. That has been adjusted. Uh, we, we're fine with the R1 zone, and all the lots will be and are now over 6,000 square feet.
Okay. Uh, are you okay with all the comments?
Yes, we concur with the comment, uh, Commissioner, Mr. Villarreal.
Okay, very good then. Uh, any questions for the engineer, Mr. Castillo, from the, from the commission?
Sí, soy Duñez. Yo no más estoy entendiendo para Mr. Castillo. Esta es la fase nueve de un desarrollo que ya se ha venido construyendo. Va a ser el mismo, cómo, cómo decir? Va a ser lo, el mismo tema, el, los, el seguimiento a las fases anteriores, la continuidad, ingeniero?
Sí, esta es una fase, es la, creo que es la última fase de la fase nueve, este, de, de Winfield. Y este sigue el tema y va a ser parte de Winfield y este, y va a tener sus mismas recepciones y todo.
Está bien, yo no le veo ningún problema. Muy bien, muy bien, ingeniero, muy bien, Chairman, gracias.
Okay, uh, Rafa.
Yes.
Uh, Kirby, I'm going to have Ralph translate a little bit of that conversation for you, just in case you didn't understand it all. Would, would you go ahead and do that, please?
Absolutely. Kirby, just for the record, Commissioner Duñez was asking if the subdivision, as it was, in this last phase, as it was being developed, it would be, uh, contiguous or continuity with the existing phases? And the response is yes from the engineer, affirmative.
Thank you, Rafa.
Okay.
Let's move it.
Yes.
Let's move it.
Let's go ahead and, uh, if, if nobody, if nobody else has any questions for the engineer or anything, can I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve subject to the comment.
Second motion.
We have a motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody who's against? Against?
Abstain, Mr. Chairman.
You abstain, all right. Uh, so then we do have five affirmative votes and one abstention. Motion carries in, thank you. Next item.
Uh, please, for the records, when you second, could you also provide your name? That would be helpful, thank you, so that.
Sorry, second motion, Oluwagale.
Thank you very much. And same with when you propose the motion, thank you.
Tevez proposed a motion.
Thank you very much.
All right, item 6B.
Agenda item 6B is the preliminary consideration of the plat of Calletta Industrial Park, Phase 4. Applicant Betsen Holdings LLC, the engineer Bellwark Consulting, 5.599 acre tract located west of 35, Interstate 35 and north of Ball Bullock Loop. The zoning is M1. The proposed use is industrial, and it is one lot. General action. Aerial view. Street view. And the proposed plat. And the staff comments, the main, uh, comment is planning comment number one of the connection of General Milton Road to El Gato Road for the subdivision. And then the proposed motion.
Great.
Rafa, do you want to give a little context here? Because I know there will, the engineer doesn't agree with, uh, the comment number one. Can you provide some background on this?
Initially, when this master plan was taken to the, uh, commission, uh, last year, one of the staff comments was to provide for a connection, uh, for, to, from El Gato to General Milton Road.
Can you explain where that is? So El Gato is this road right here, if you can see the cursor.
Yeah.
And General Milton is up here, and the master plan required a connection between these two. And that master plan, this planning commission approved that master plan last year, requiring this connection on this phase. So can you give a little additional context?
Absolutely. If we could go, if we could go up to the aerial, uh, which I believe is the slide before, or one more, I'm sorry. And here you could actually get a little bit of overview of how the, the traffic flow from El Gato is needed over to connect to General Milton, and then out to Killam Industrial. So there's quite a bit of limitation there for traffic flows.
So that corresponds with our comment number one to, to provide a connection there as on the approved master plan.
That makes sense.
Well, let me ask you this. On El Gato, what's going on right now? How is the movement being made? It's going back to Saran, back out to the Mines Road, right?
Well, as you can see, actually, no, this road, even though it's a dirt road, is getting utilized by traffic.
Okay, which is a dirt road, the one on that property, right?
Yeah, the, where we're asking for the connection is actually where the, the public is, is using this, even though it's only a dirt road.
They made it, okay. All right. Now, the, the issue here, I think, that we have to look at is, this is a very small track. It's like five acres, and if you take, now, the road width that you're looking for is a two-lane road?
Yes, sir.
The 60-foot right-of-way or what?
Rafa?
Uh, actually, it was, uh, well, let me, let me get back on the schedule. Well, it, it should, it should match up with the, what's there on El Gato 60.
Well, that's a 60-foot right-of-way, yeah, and, and so, okay, well, I guess the question I have then is, uh, you have a 60-foot road, 60-foot wide. You have a 30-foot easement, if you look at that plat. Um. I'm not sure what's in the easement. I'm, I'm going to guess there's a pipeline or something in there. Um. So it's going to be a tight squeeze of anything. And the other thing that I have a comment on here is, you know, if you look at the numbers, you look, this is a very small piece of property, in my opinion. And I understand what you guys are saying, that this connection is vital and needed. But I think, um, and I'm just going to give you my comment on this thing, and my comment on this thing would be that for a five-acre track, you take, uh, and I kind of looked at this plat over and over. It appears to me that it's about 600, 700 linear feet, you know, uh, and across on this plat. If you take a 60-foot right-of-way, you're taking about, I guess, maybe an acre of land. Uh, so that leaves them four acres to develop, then, plus the cost of the roadway, which is going to run you, I don't know, 300,000. I don't, I'm not familiar with the terrain. I'm just, you know, if it's, there's no major issues.
Commissioner Villarreal?
Yes, go ahead.
If I can, just one, one, a little context here, this is one phase of a multi-phase master plan. And so although, although you might be concerned that, that is, uh, you might be concerned about the amount of land that they're using to build this road, consider the amount of land as part of the whole master plan, and that this connection is important to the entire master plan. So the developer developed this entire master plan. It's not just this track that they're considering. So this connection is, is a, is a big part of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chairman, yo tengo unos comentarios.
Yes, sir.
Soy Duñez porque creo que mi cámara anda fallando. Este, este, el construir una calle aquí me da la impresión de que también tiene un poco de flu de, de hundimiento. Sería muy costoso estarle dando mantenimiento a ese hundimiento. Y yo respeto el master plan, pero entonces, ¿por qué no hicieron la calle en el master plan al, al dividir todos los lotes? Porque ahorita poner, queremos ponerle la calle a un solo lote. Y estoy completamente de acuerdo con, con, con usted, presidente, de que si tenemos 5 punto 5 acres, le vas a quitar un acre, y no solo le vas a quitar un acre al terreno, le vas a quitar cuatro, 40,000 pies a una posible bodega o construcción, en donde la ciudad podría cobrar más taxas de esos pies cuadrados útiles, a no cobrar nada de pies cuadrados inútiles como sería la calle. No creo que sea propicia la calle. Yo básicamente creo que habría que hacer ahí una rotonda en la entrada de esos retornos que, que tenemos en muchos parques. Tampoco creo que sea mucho flu, afluencia de tráfico. Conozco bien el lugar. Yo por ahí paso a mi bodega, Sara y El Gato Road. El tráfico no es por ahí. Entonces, no creo que sea una buena idea la calle, respetando el, el master plan. Tampoco estoy de acuerdo que yo no estuve el inicio en el master plan, de haber sido así lo hubiera yo expresado, que no, no, no es conveniente para el desarrollo de las bodegas. Y ese es mi, mi punto de vista, salvo algunas dudas que tengo. A ver si el ingeniero me aclara lo del, o del, no conozco a fondo el terreno. No sé si tenga, eh, este, undición, inundación. No, voy a mi tocayo, Rafa, vida, abri si me ayuda con la translation, please.
Okay, so Kirby, just, uh, for the record, Commissioner Duñez is expressing his concern that by, this, the lot is already five, a little over five acres, and by requiring that roadway a little over an acre would be lost, which could be, uh, better utilized for warehouse space. It's quite a lot of acreage to remove, uh, which also, uh, would not be taxable property if the road was there. So he's kind of concerned of the loss of potential warehouse space on this.
I have a comment, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If, if, if Rafa could just respond with the same response I gave Commissioner Villarreal, that this is part of a master plan, and, and the developer doesn't have just this tract, he had an entire master plan, several tracks. And, um, so in the context of that development, it's not, it's not a large portion of it.
Comisionado Duñez, por parte de Kirby, avisa que aún así que sí es una parte de lo que es este lote, este, para el camino. Esta, esta parcela es una pequeña porción del desarrollo completo, el desarrollo total, de que fue construido o se está construyendo ahí en Estadia.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Duñez, habla Duñez otra vez. Perdón, que, que insista, no, no quiero ganar un argumento con Kirby. Pero en el momento en que mandaron la, la lotificación, los cortes, deberían de haber hecho las calles, no ahora. Este, creo que estamos perdiendo, insisto, 40,000 pies de bodega, que cobramos muy buena taxa por 40,000 pies, y por calles no cobramos nada, y no se requiere la, la calle. Ahí esa calle no tiene, no tiene tráfico.
Chairman, I have a statement and comment, please.
Just, just, uh, Raúl, just a minute, let me finish with this other commissioner, okay? Just a minute. Rafa, can you translate that? I think one of the questions that, that needs to be answered here is, uh, the development on, uh, I guess, El Gato Road, uh, I believe that was a different owner, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that is correct.
Why that road wasn't put in at, at that time, or whatever. But translate that for Kirby, please.
Certainly. So Kirby, Commissioner Duñez, uh, it goes back to his original argument about, uh, the loss in potential warehouse space, as well as, in his opinion, in that area, it is not seen that there's that much traffic, uh, going through there or that would circulate through there, if this road get built.
Well, for that, I will have our traffic engineer speak to the importance of that, but one thing I'd also add is we're not just talking about traffic. If you leave these two dead ends, you create two dead ends for water as well. And as we know from this last summer, we've had big issues. The whole reason we had to do the, uh, the issue with our boil water notice had to do with dead ends, water lines, the dead end. If we have this circular through, we can have the water lines loop as well. We won't have that issue with, um, poor water quality when we have dead ends in our water lines. But also important is traffic. So if our traffic engineer could speak to why this connection is important.
Danny McGee, perfect, correct? Yeah, it's a real simple thing, is we just need more connection points than, I mean, just looking at the area, there aren't a whole lot of through streets. And like I said, this, this is just part of a much larger, uh, development that, uh, and then from what I understand, uh, when I was a texter, I dealt with this development, and this, this little acreage that they're trying to build, that wasn't even part of that development. This is just something they're trying to squeeze out of that development at the last second. And they agreed to this street when they first came through with this, uh, master plan.
Okay, all right. Just a minute, let me, let me recognize Commissioner Oluwagale, who wants to speak.
Mr. Chairman, um, you know, I'm on board business development, but this is just common sense traffic, uh, transportation planning. Given that the, uh, the lot is, is, is locked into no other entrance or exits, and there's no other way for that traffic to flow through. Uh, El Gato Road, you can have a lot of backup from that one property going back into Mines Road, and that's something we want to, Mines Road's a big problem as it is, man. We're just going to add to that issue. And these are commercial trucks, because they're not your single vehicles. Uh, they, they take up most of the road, and, and it, it only makes sense, uh, in a practical manner, to just connect these two roads. I'm seeing, so, Rafa, I don't have the aerial view on the, on the presentation, so I had to go to Google Maps to give, give me a, a aerial perspective. I had a hard time identifying where, what I was, I was looking at. Um, so as far as the tax base, well, you, you take some, you give some, right? And in this case, we do need that road. So I, I'm in disagreement with, uh, Commissioner, uh, Duñez and, and Mr. Villarreal. And we need that road.
Very good. Thank you for your comment. Uh, one other comment, who was it? George? Did you have a comment? Somebody else had a comment.
It was me. I, I really had a question. Since, since they went with the comments last year, and now they'd like to change it, we haven't heard, what is, what is, what is it that they're proposing? The, what, what is the advocate proposing?
What they're proposing is this two, two cul-de-sacs.
Cul-de-sacs. And so, how is that developed with two cul-de-sacs?
Can you rephrase that?
Well, don't you need to have like an, an interior road to access the cul-de-sacs?
I think now may be an appropriate time to ask, uh, the engineer to speak, if you have some questions for the engineer.
Okay.
Good.
If, if the commissioner wants to, wants to do that.
Oscar, let me have the engineer's record. Go ahead, Oscar.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. Just, uh, for the record, we do not concord with, uh, with comment one. Uh, this plat is, uh, 5.59 acres, and if it's done, adding the street and right-of-way as requested by PMP, it will be a 4.10 acres will be developed, and your development cost will be approximately $685,000, which that makes 167, uh, acres per acre. Making this development feasible, and you will kill this, this project. Uh, if this plat is done as shown with the cul-de-sacs at General Mills Adelgasto, one, five acres ago will be developed, and the development cost would approximately be like 350,000 and 67,000 per acre. It's still expensive, but it will make it feasible. Uh, and just to, like, all these tracts have been fenced, and yeah, like, they do destroy the, you know, the fence. As, as you can see on the pictures that the PMP, uh, the staff took, their strats, they're using this for illegal dumping and illegal activities. Uh, so by developing this track, first of all, we will have turnaround, uh, and, and the illegal activity will stop. Uh, I know this particular one of the, is the last part of, of this area. There's no more access to, to, to the east from here. I mean, it's not like more lots are going to be created, and they're going to be adding to this area of the, of the master plan. Uh, this is the last part, and, and you're saying, oh, well, then, uh, this is part of the master plan, but the reality is that this is a plat that it does, it doesn't make sense to, to, to do. Why would you lose money to, to, to rent it? It's not feasible. Uh, talking about the, the water line, uh, connection, there is a utility element that is the, uh, you know, like, it's shown on the plat, it's a recorded, it's included with them, that it can be used for a pipeline or, or a water line if that would be, if they would like to connect it, talking about the, the water. Uh, these, after these, there's a, a flood zone and a creek, so there's no, like I said, there's no more development, and so at this point, I, I don't know what was the specific question.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the engineer from the commissioners?
Chairman.
Yes.
So he, he said by adding this road, it, it'll bring up the acre at 160,000 per acre?
The cost of development.
The development cost.
Okay.
Uh, if I, if I can, provide a little.
Yes, go ahead, Kirby.
On that, he, he ran some calculations across us, and, uh, that, that we didn't, we asked for some corrections on them, so we don't agree with his calculations. But what he showed you, what he said, even his own example of 160,000, that's for the whole project, it's not per acre. It wouldn't, he's not saying it would be an additional 160,000 per acre of development. But one of the things that, you know, let's say you and I, Commissioner Oluwagale, said, we're going to buy a pie together. And you said, and I said, okay, I'll go in with you on this pie, but you got to give me a bite of it. You say, hey, no problem, no problem, I'll give you a bite. But then you start taking slices away, and you get down to the last slice of pie, and I say, okay, I'd like that bite now. And you say, well, you, I can't give you the bite, because you're going to, that's, that's half the slice of this pie. Or half the slice of, uh, that's half of the slice if I give you this bite now. That's essentially what we're seeing here, is this was part of a master plan, and that connection was an important, is an important, still is an important part of this master plan. We're asking it to be complete, and, and the, the, uh, the owner, developer did not have a problem with it when it was part of the master plan last year. It was approved. And so it's now an approved part of the master plan, and, and we're just asking for that to, uh, to continue.
You know, and that, that is, uh, actually, the actual road has never, can I, 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 I don't know if they're listening to me. Are you guys listening to me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, okay. Uh, this part of the master plan, the owner nor the engineer, which is myself, have never agreed to. Uh, it actually has never physically been, been on the plan. Uh, I, I know, I talked to the city engineer, and I think Rafael, uh, Rafael. I, I know, I talked to the city engineer and I think Rafael, Rafael, Rafa was there. Rafael Villarreal, where even the previous engineer had concerns of safety. And for some reason, he, you know, and, and something, it's never been even drawn. So for, for them to say, you know, it's because you agreed, no, no, we never agreed. And even the, the previous engineer that agreed, you know, had very, a lot of concerns and was trying to get out of east. And he didn't talk to, to the city, the city engineer. And he confirmed that on a meeting with Rafael Villarreal and myself. And he said it was free, but yeah, he had concerns because, and, and, and really, I actually talked to, to Mr. McGee, also the traffic director. And, and he said, well, we can make it safe by probably adding, I don't know, probably light or something. That might be three, I tell you, you cannot, you cannot do it if it's, it's dangerous. But also if, I know, unfortunately, it was unfortunately that a, a, a new engineer agree, Mr. McGee agree for some reason, but we cannot, like I said, the, the developer or myself was would never agree to, to, to this. And I have not seen one master plan where it actually shows. I've never seen it. I don't think it exists. Other than this, prior that I've known, an official master plan, I have never seen.
Okay, let me ask the planning department, guys, do you all have a master plan that has that road on it approved?
We, at the meeting, when it was brought, it wasn't drawn. And one of the comments were that that needs, that, that connection needs to be there. And the planning commission agreed. And so it was the responsibility of the, the, the engineer to redraw that and submit it. And they didn't submit it, but the, the record is what happened at planning commission, the comments that happened there.
Very good, thank you. Does any other commissioner, does any other commissioner have any, any comments?
Does not advise have a question?
Just a minute, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Narváez.
Kirby, so what happens in the instance where the original engineer of record is no longer the one representing this particular item or plat? And now they come in and assume this project. Are, do, are they able to make any changes or they have to abide to what was originally agreed upon?
The master plan, our ordinance requires that all phases adhere to what's in the master plan. And so, yes, this, this phase should align with the approved master plan. You know, sma- minor variations, we can understand that. But when you're missing a road that's approved in the master plan, that is not being in compliance with the master plan. And this is the approved, approved master plan doesn't have a connection there.
Okay, Commissioner Duñez.
Si, thank you, Mr. President. Estoy entendiendo que Kirby, Mr. Kirby dice que hay un acuerdo, tendrá un acuerdo por escrito, tengo entendido que no lo tiene. Y este, entendí también su ejemplo de la repostería, me pareció inaplicable a este asunto. Porque el terreno está muy irregular y quitarle un pedazo de una calle lo lastimaríamos mucho tanto al terreno como los ingresos en taxes de la ciudad. Y como dijo Mr. Narváez, si la gente cambia, yo acabo de llegar a Planin Anzoni y no puedo respetar si es que hubo un acuerdo con mi antecesor. Entonces me gustaría y lo propongo que nos sujetemos a lo que hay de ahorita en adelante. Si no tenemos nada por escrito, olvidemos eso, podríamos sometirlo, thank you, sir.
Ralph, translate that, please.
Kirby, for the record, Mr. Duñez was stating that the, since this project was initially developed by a prior engineering firm, which is no longer available and that there was no actual written or contractual agreement on that. He believes that this item should, should be moving forward with a clean slate without that item.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This, this is a he said, she said classic. This is phase four of a master plan that apparently has at least three other phases. I think that, I'm, I'm just going to suggest that this item gets tabled and we need to see the whole story. Because if there was an agreement made or voted on by the board and back then they said, yes, we agree with the comments. And that, and then they've done one, two and three, and now at number four, like Kirby's pipe analogy, all of a sudden, well, let's change it here at the end. I'm just saying that I don't know the whole story and I don't want to get, I don't want to make a bad decision.
Well, right now, let me just go ahead and make one comment. What Kirby said was that the master plan was approved with a comment approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission that this connection he added. Is that correct, Kirby?
That is correct.
So that was there. Now, if you're asking the planning department to come back with the notes where the planning commission approved that and you want this tabled until we get that particular document, that's up to you commissioners, what you all want to do with that.
Well, I was saying that if, if the developer agreed to those comments and then they since then have gone through one, two and three, and now as the last pie bite thing, and I'm not saying this is accurate, then to change that at the very end, I don't know how that injures the, the, the traffic flow in the whole area. That's all I'm saying. You know, was this contingent on the approvals of one, two and three? I don't know.
I have a question for staff.
Just a minute, just a minute, just a minute. Let me have Kirby answer that because what you're asking, if I understand correctly, is when this master plan was approved with all the phases, that the commission added this road, that, that, that this was something that needed to be done. Is that pretty much summarize what you were asking?
The master plan, the master plan was, the master plan was proposed to the planning commission. And when staff reviewed it, staff said, you need to add this connection. And at that meeting, the planning commission decided yes. They agreed with staff comments that this connection needed to be added. The engineer, however, did not redraw it and resubmit it to us as they do, as they should. Excuse me, Oscar, if I could finish, please. What, what's binding is.
Just a minute, just a minute, George, go ahead.
That's, that's fine, but, but was the master plan all, how many phases was the master plan, Kirby?
Rafa, can you speak to that?
Absolutely. The master, the, the master plan consisted of four phases and this is the last phase.
Right, so then if this road is contingent.
Can I talk? Please, I need to talk.
Just a minute, just a minute, I'm recognizing George Beckelheimer right now. I'm going to let you all speak one at a time.
Yes. See, if, if it continues on with the he said, she said, Mr. Chairman, that's all I'm saying is that there's no reason that Kirby's lying, but, but Oscar's not going to lie either. There, there might be, maybe a misunderstanding. We should just look at all the details of the master plans, I mean, the master plan, the different phases and see how the approval of the other three blended in with the need for the road. Or is it superfluous? I doubt it is, but I, I don't really know. That's my comment.
Okay. I think, Oscar, did you want to go ahead and speak, please? Oscar?
Okay. For the commissioner, I don't know who it was, but that said that we need to have all the information. First of all, I'm not contesting, so we should untable this because I'm not contesting that it, it was concord by, by the previous engineer. I'm not, I'm not contesting that. Now, look at comment number one, it says April 4, 2019, when, when that was, that was concord with. Even though the, the owner didn't approve, or I wasn't in the picture, just to give you some history, by then, the first phase was already recorded and phase two and phase three were already on construction. So by the time this was done, we had the master plan the way with the cul-de-sacs, not with the street. So yeah, by 2019, so last year, but this, so if somebody is changing something after the fact, it's not us. And like I said, I'm not contesting what they're saying that it was a, that, that was a comment that was a concord with. I'm just saying it wasn't myself and it wasn't the, the owner. And just to have the timeline, this was on April 4, it is on the screen, April 4, 2019. By then, like I said, the, it was already recorded and constructed. Phase two, which is already recorded and constructed, was almost done. And right now, and phase three was already in construction. So, and, and, and Mr. McGee had, was already in conversations to try to repair back that, that comment. Just wanted to put some timeline. And, and if this has been delayed already, I, I wouldn't like to also, you know, to table it again.
Mr. Chairman. Just a minute, let me, let me, let me ask a question of this engineer. If we look at this proposed road that is being asked of you, you mentioned it on El Gato, I think it's El Gato Road, it's a ninety degree road. To try to turn a tractor trailer, what kind of a turning radius do you need on a street to be able to make that happen? Oscar?
To, you know, like here is more, you will need to, to have a very low velocity or a very big radius. To be honest, we will need a lot more space, but I, I could, that's also, I mean, it, it is definitely unsafe. I mean, we will have to do something about slowing down any traffic there because if somebody tries to do that at thirty miles, that ninety degrees, they, I mean, they could end up on the creek.
Okay, thank you. That, that, thank you. Let me now ask our traffic engineer, Dan. The, the issue there on that turning is, if assuming that the, I mean, there is an approved comment on the master plan way back. I'm looking at the plat right now and I'm seeing that there's about a ninety that you'd have to do to make that street happen. In your opinion, as a traffic engineer, what would be a safe design or would this be a safe design? Or what, what would your comment be on something like that?
It, it would be really easy to, to solve, a couple of stop signs in a direction, make them stop and then they can go through the curve at five miles an hour. It's, it's done everywhere.
Very good, that's the answer that I was looking for, thank you. All right, any other commission member wants to speak?
Yes, I have one comment and, and more of a question also for staff. So if, if someone wants, the, the, the traffic that's there now with the surrounding warehouses to get to I-35 and go southbound, they need to get on mine road or they go through Kilam and go to, go back up to I-35 and then head south? I guess a question for traffic, I believe, or planning.
That is correct.
Dan, did you want to ask anything there?
Can you repeat the question?
So if the traffic that's there now to, to go, to flow up to northbound I-35, they would just hit Kilam Industrial, right? And then to flow south, they would need to get to mine road?
Yes.
So to, to, to go south, it could go, I guess it could take a left, they want to Kilam Industrial and go to, to a mine road or they could take a right and go to the first road.
So in your opinion, when connecting this road, alleviate traffic from going onto mine road?
Well, if they, it's not going to change their mind of which way they're going to go. It's just going to give them more, I mean, when I was with the highway department, Saturday Road was being looked at to be made bigger and carry more traffic, but there wasn't the run of Friday way on it. So this is another avenue to get more trucks going north and south in that area.
Okay.
It would definitely.
All right, that's my comment, Commissioner.
All right, thank you. Any other commissioner wants to make a comment or any question?
I, I just have a question for traffic. The, the only property there on Milton is Medline Industries, correct? Like that one warehouse that's there on the north side of the, the picture?
Right.
Okay, and, and so we're asking to connect that road from Gato to General Milton. That's a dead end, that's a one warehouse. And then all of Gato, if you look on the rest of Google Maps, it empties onto Sarah Road and Myler Road as well as Kilam, right?
Right.
Okay, so, so we're, we're creating a go-through for, this, this plot is at the end of Gato Road and it deads and, dead ends into the lot?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
All right, gentlemen, I think we've got enough information now. What are the wishes of the commission?
Yo nada más quiero comentarle a, a George lo que entendí, que él quiere poner a la tabla. Yo no estoy de acuerdo porque no veo elementos nuevos. Si la ciudad nos dice que sí tiene los acuerdos por escrito o algo nuevo que enseñarnos, pues lo podemos retrasar. Pero si no hay nada nuevo, yo creo que ya escuchamos el pensar de cada quien. Y yo desde ahorita les propongo la moción de que no se acepte la calle.
Okay. Well, I got correct, Commissioner Duñez's motion is make a motion to approve subject to the following comments, striking condition, comment, traffic comment number one.
That is correct, that would be the motion.
Sí, es correcto, la moción solamente la retiro si ellos me dicen ahorita que tienen acuerdos, algo por escrito o elementos nuevos que enseñarnos. Si no tienen nada nuevo, mi moción ya es irnos para adelante pidiendo que, que no se aproveche la calle y díselos permiso como está. Gracias.
Okay. I'll tell you what, Ralph, would you do me a favor? Would you repeat his motion in English for everybody so Kirby can understand?
Absolutely. Commissioner Duñez's motion is to approve this plat, removing staff comment number one with regard to the road, given that unless there are some sort of written agreements between the city and the developer or the prior engineer.
Okay. Gentlemen.
Is he asking if there are not written agreement? Because there are written agreements, there are the master plan.
There are.
The approved master plan at, at the lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to make, Mr. Commissioner Lugo, the, Kirby was saying that, that they, they had made a motion and it was in a comment previously. You know, and I know maybe the other commissioner wants some type of contract agreement, but how many times have we gone back? If we pretend that the comment wasn't ever agreed upon, we're going to lose the consistency of these comments. And I truly believe if it was the other way around, that there was a comment found in their favor, they would be battling to stick to that comment.
Okay.
Yeah. So I would make, I'm going to make a, well, I don't know.
I have a motion on the floor right now. I need a second on that motion.
Commissioner Théas, second.
We have a second on the motion. Now I'm going to ask each commissioner to signify those that are in agreement. And I'm going to start with, I guess, commissioner who made the motion, he's in agreement. Mr. Duñez, you vote in favor of the motion?
Yes, in favor.
Okay. Number two is.
Can we have Rafa do the roll call?
Yes, roll call, please, Rafa.
Absolutely. So we will begin with Commissioner Duñez who made the motion. And it was seconded by Commissioner Théas.
All right.
All right, then Abraham Lugo?
I am against.
Commissioner Johnny Narváez?
We didn't hear you.
Nay. Against.
Commissioner Raúl Gualde?
Nay.
And Commissioner George Beckelheimer?
George, we didn't hear you.
Oh, abstention? Abstain?
We've got two in favor, three against and one abstention.
The motion doesn't pass, of course.
Right.
Yep, okay, the motion fails. So that motion failed, can I have a, another motion? Will the commission make another motion?
I will make a motion to approve subject to the following call, comments, including all the planning.
All right.
I second.
Motion and second, who seconded?
The Commissioner Lugo.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Again, Ralph, would you please do the roll call on the vote?
Absolutely. Commissioner Théas?
Nay.
Commissioner Duñez? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Duñez?
Nay.
Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Narváiz? Commissioner Johnny Narváiz?
Commissioner Narváiz, we didn't hear you.
You want to text him? He may have some.
Yes.
Problem.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can now. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Beckelheimer?
Abstain.
Okay. Yeah, one, two, three in favor and two.
Well, you, you need to ask the chairman also.
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I'll vote in favor.
We have one, two, three, four in favor and two against and one abstention.
All right. The motion carries.
Does that pass?
Yes. Okay, moving on. Let's go to the next item. Six C?
All right. Item six E, preliminary consideration of the replat of lots two AA and four A, block sixty-three, into lots two B and four B, block sixty-three, Calton Garden subdivision. Compliment Rosendo M. Carranco, engineer Howland Engineering Surveying. One point oh three acres east of Springfield Avenue and south of Calton Road. The zoning is before. The proposed use is commercial and it's two lots. General location. Aerial photo. Street view. And the proposed replat.
Do you want to explain anything about this plat, Rafa?
In, for this particular plat, they are reducing the eh, cross asset access easement on, on one of the lots and making it smaller. This is the site of an ATM machine. So they're just reducing eh, the access easement around it.
Thank you.
Yes. And staff comments for planning. Water and utilities. And the proposed motion. And I do believe we might have the engineer of record on the phone for any questions.
Uh, yes, we do. Uh, uh, Rick Villarreal with Howland Engineers on the phone.
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. Rick Villarreal, Howland Engineering. Um, I've gone over the project I've read and the comments by staff. And eh, we concur with staff comments and eh, we eh, we ask for the approval of that first staff comment.
Any questions for the engineer of record from the commission? No questions being heard. Uh, what are the wishes for the commission?
I move to approve the item with staff comments. Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'm going to ask one something here because I think I made a, I'd like to bring back eh, the last item on the Caliety Industrial Park. Um, because I think I misunderstood the motion on, on, on what the intent here was. Um, and I'd like to bring it back for a revote. Uh, I, I, it was my misunderstanding on, on the vote there.
I'll make a motion to bring it back, Commissioner, Chairman.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
Back. Uh, I'm going to re-ask for the vote again. Um, like I said, I, I, I had a misunderstanding and this is my fault. So I'm going to ask for a revote. Uh, Ralph, can you take the, the vote again, please?
Absolutely. For the.
Can we have a reiteration of the motion, Rafa?
Certainly. The motion eh, which was eh, initiated by Commissioner Ugarte and seconded by Commissioner Lugo was to approve the preliminary consideration of the plat of Caliety Industrial Park Phase Four eh, with staff comments. Okay. Having, having heard the motion and the second, I'd like to call on eh, Commissioner Thayer for his vote.
Nay.
Perdón, yo tengo una, una, una observación, Rafa, y al resto de, de los comisiones. En la moción que yo puse, no vi la votación de, de Mister Villarreal. No vi, vi tres en contra, dos a favor y una abstención, pero no vi la, no vi el voto de, que tomaran el voto de Erasmo Villarreal.
Pues Rafael, ahorita lo que estamos tomando la moción esta para un reconsider, un revote. So let's just continue with it. Okay?
Está bien.
Agreed.
All right, go.
Very well. So just to confirm, Commissioner Thayer, it was in the negative? No?
That is correct.
Commissioner Duñez?
Name.
Name. Uh, Commissioner Narváiz?
Yes.
And Commissioner Beckelheimer?
Abstain.
And up in closing eh, eh, Erasmo Villarreal, Chairman Villarreal.
All right. Now eh, the motion eh, was to, to approve subject to all the following comments. That is correct, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I vote against that. I'm, I'm against it. Yes. I think we now have a quondrum here of we have three and three, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct, Chairman.
So I'm not sure what happens now, Kirby.
What? It's, it's not approved.
I would, I would ask to, to redo the motion because I've looked at the minutes from the both the minutes from April 2019 as well as the master plan that we're all talking about because they're online. And the thing is, I would ask to table this so that we can pull the minutes from the very first time this plat box brought up. Because on April the fourth of 2019, we had a meeting and the reason it was rezoned was solely to add a billboard plat to Phase One. It wasn't the, the initial, the, the initial plat. There's a prior plat from April, prior to April nine, April of 2019. And the reason with that one was, the reason that April, April fourth of 2019 was solely to cut out a portion from one of the lots, Lot One, Phase Three, for a billboard on Interstate thirty-five. There was an initial plat before April fourth of 2019. And I'd like to see if that had the same comment that we're talking about.
Okay.
Yes, we'll, we'll look at the records. The um, that may be the reason for the plat, but the comments on, on the plat and, and all the comments were accepted. That's, that's where we asked for that connection and, and that's where it was approved. So we'll, we'll get you the records if that's what you'd like to do. If you want to table it and, and we'll get you, we'll also send you a link of the video as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The fact that it didn't pass, it just, doesn't just, it just automatically gets, it, I mean, that's it. It just didn't pass. So they can bring it back. Is there some prohibition? On, this isn't a zoning thing, so there's not a six-month delay?
No.
Right. Doesn't this just normally get hashed out between the entities and brought back in, in either the same version or a different version?
He can bring it back in a hurry. Because at this point, eh, you know, my, we have a tie, really, three to three. So with that in mind, Kirby, you're saying that because we do have a tie in the vote, the motion eh, does not pass. Is that my understanding?
That's correct. That's correct. It doesn't pass, but there, there isn't anything in our land development code specific to the planning commission that says, yes, that it has to wait a certain time. No, that's just, it doesn't pass. So it's not an approved, um, it's not an approved plat.
That's correct.
Not a denial either.
It's not a denial either. Correct.
Yeah, there is no action at this point that approves or does not approve this particular plat, right?
Right.
Under, okay. So then the motion, I guess that Joey, you're, you're going to make a motion to, I guess, table the item and get the research done and bring it back to the commission so the commission can have more information. Would that be your motion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
A second. Would you all say, all those in favor of that?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against that? Okay, then the motion carries. Then that's what we expect at our next meeting is that all that information, research, come back to the commission so that there's clear information as to who said what and what's on on the tape.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Let's go ahead. I'm sorry and continue now eh, with the other eh, plat. What's the next item is eh, six D?
Rafa? Rafa, are you there?
Okay, let me read it. This is a preliminary consideration of the plat of Secuey Suarez, subdivision intends commercial. Ralph, is he back?
Yes, sir.
All right. So you can make this presentation?
Absolutely. Eh, the applicant is Secuey Suarez. The engineer is Premier Engineering. Five point one oh acres tract located south of FM fourteen seventy-two and east of Coal Mine Road. The zoning is M-one. The proposed use is commercial and the, and it's one lot.
Okay. Is the engineer of record on the phone?
Uh, yes, he is, Mr. Chair. Uh, I have Eddie Muñoz with Premier Engineering.
All right. Good eh, evening, Eddie. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Eduardo Muñoz with Premier Engineering. We read the, the, the comments for the item and we, we concur with the comments eh, I guess eh, we ask for your approval of, of the item if possible.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the engineer from the commission? Not hearing anybody. What is eh, wishes of the commission?
Chairman, I move to approve the item with staff comments.
Second.
And we have a second.
Second from Jose Thayer.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion carries. Next item. Item six E.
The next item is agenda item six E. The preliminary consideration of the replat of lots five, six, seven, and eight, block two thirty-four Western Division into lot seven A and eight A, block two thirty-four Western Division. The applicant is Provecho LP. Engineer is Duraid Engineering. Point eighty-three acres of land located east of San Bernardo Avenue and west of Interstate thirty-five. The zoning is Central Business District and B-three. The proposed use is commercial and it's two lots. General location. Aerial view. Street view. Additional street view. And the proposed plat. Staff comments for planning. Water and utilities. And the proposed motion. And I do believe we have the engineer of record on the phone.
All right. Let us recognize him.
Um, Mr. Ramos?
Yes.
Uh, you may proceed, sir.
Okay. Um, hello, this is Ricardo Ramos with Duraid, and I'm the engineer with, um, Apollo, and I agree with the staff comments.
Very good. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for the engineer? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve subject to the following comments. This is Commissioner Narváiz.
Hey.
Second, Beckelheimer.
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. The next item is item.
Agenda.
I'm going to ask eh, I believe all of eight, eight A through eight I are all approvals of final plats. Is that correct, Kirby?
Seven A through eight A and through eight I?
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Eight A.
Eight, eight, eight. Wait, I'm sorry. We, we need to do seven A first. Uh, I, I just jumped one ahead of you guys. Now, let's do seven A first.
Very well. Agenda item seven A. Preliminary reconsideration of the replat of zero point eight five one acres out of lots one eighty, one eighty-three, block three, a variable width offsite easement and two portions of the San Antonio Drive, right away to BS San Austin Unit Three into lots two oh four and two oh five, block three BS San Austin Unit Three and Quintana Drive right away. Next. The applicant is Mines Road Development Limited. The engineer is Camacho Hernández and Associates. Point eighty-eight acres eh, south of Fasken Boulevard and north of Terrado Drive. The zoning is R-one A. Proposed use is residential and it's two lots. General location.
Yeah. Ralph, let me ask you eh, what is, I, what I gather here, the intent of this was to create some utility easements for drainage?
And this. If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, in this particular case, when this originally came through, it was to provide a punch through on Quintana Drive.
Uh huh.
Subsequently, what has occurred is if you see on the left on the asphalted and then on the replat, the Quintana Drive is punching through and extending. And then lots one eighty and one eighty-one are merging and one eighty-two and one eighty-three are merging. So the owners of one eighty and one eighty-three will get, actually get larger lots and provide the needed connectivity to punch through on that street.
Okay. All right. All right. Is the engineer of record on the line?
Uh, yes, he is, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have Arturo Camacho on the phone.
All right. Mr. Camacho, go ahead, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commission members. Eh, eh, we have eh, read the comments and we have no objections. We concur with the comments.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Camacho from the commission? None heard. Eh, what are the wishes of the commission?
Move, move to approve the item with the staff comments.
Second.
You go second.
All right. Would you guys just state your names on when you make the motions? The motion was made by Mr. Beckelheimer?
Ugarte second.
Ugarte second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Hearing none against, motion carries. All right. Moving on.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion to hear items eight A through eight eh, I at once.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second by Beckelheimer.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Against? Motion carries. Yes, sir.
Want to make a motion to approve items eight A through eight I.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Beckelheimer.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion against? Motion carries. We're now to nine A.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The last item eh, for your consideration is the consideration of the extension to the final plan approval of the replat of lot seven, block ten, Unic Tech Industrial Park Phase Eight and nineteen point nine eight five acre Warner Enterprises tract into lot seven A, block ten, the tech industrial center Phase Eight, and the attempt is industrial.
Okay. What is the eh, I believe this plat was approved eh, two years ago?
That is correct. The, the plat received final plat approval on December seventh, twenty seventeen. It is scheduled to expire next month on the seventh. So they're asking for the additional six-month extension, which is called for in the regs.
Right. Okay. Any questions from the commission members? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move that we approve the item. Beckelheimer?
Second, Ugarte.
And a second by Ugarte. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Okay, motion carries. Next item, was you have director's report?
Yes, just um, we, we were able to speak a few minutes before just to show you some of the things we're doing to try to make organization, improve the organization and to, to make it easier, more transparent and faster for applications to go through. So we're doing our best. If you ever have any input, we're going to show you along the way and gather your input. And, and we'll continue to keep you updated. As always, thank you very much for your service. You don't get paid to do this. You volunteer your time and it makes a big difference for, for us. So we appreciate that very much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Beckelheimer. That avoid Joey.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much, gentlemen.